Six P M. On Tuesday, April nineteenth. Would everyone follow me in pledging allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Five of the United States.
United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands.
Ends.
One nation indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Very good. May we have a roll call, please?
Justy Santos.
President.
Justy Dos.
President.
And Vice President Lex.
Yes, present. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I.
Motion. Go ahead.
I motion.
Okay, Justine moves. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Lauren. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And hopefully, everyone said a chance to review the minutes. We also entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting.
Emotion.
Okay, Justine moves to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I second.
Lauren, second to motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Chayla, you're next with the director's report on state parks passes.
Did I send the correct agenda? Oh, no. We actually have a report on summer learning this evening.
Wow. Well, okay, we'll report. We'll replace that with summer learning.
So a very special guest, always a special guest.
Oh, yeah.
Sarah Spence will be joining us, our U Services manager. And she has been working tirelessly to get twenty twenty-two summer learning program ready to go in the face of so much uncertainty and so many changes. So I've been terribly impressed, I have to say. This is all new challenges. Each year is an all-new challenge. So she has a presentation, I think.
Yeah, you should be able to share it. Okay. Let's see. Okay. Um, okay, so you might hear my dogs too. Sorry if you're hearing my dogs. Um, so, yes, we're getting ready for your summary learning challenge twenty twenty-two. It'll be June first to August thirty-first. This is just a little bit about all ages and abilities welcome. Youth ages eighteen and younger in San Mateo County can read and try new activities to get free books and earn a chance to win a thousand-dollar scholarship. And so we have some new things going on this year. In, so in the Peninsula libraries, we do get funding each year from Measure K. And that helps with our summer purchasing books. And we give out the scholarship every year as a, for a prize. It's a thousand-dollar scholarship. And sometimes we have interns as well. So those three things are what we use the Measure K funds for. And in the past, San Mateo County Library System kind of oversaw all of that. And we, each jurisdiction in the Peninsula, would just send them how many books we wanted. And so they would order the books, they would send the books to us. All we would have to do is like unpack them and give them out. And then they would organize the scholarship with ScholarShare, which is the organization we use to provide the scholarships. And so they would have to, you know, give the money to the scholarship, ScholarShare. But this year is the first year that each jurisdiction is doing it themselves. So we have a budget for Daily City. And I have ordered over seven thousand books, as you can see. This is just some of it. Like, this is a lot of them. But from Scholastic and our book vendor that we use, Baker &amp; Taylor, I ordered some teen books from there. So I ordered all of those. I'm gonna be organizing the scholarship. The great thing about this year is that we don't have to limit it to one scholarship, which is what we've had in the past. So we're going to try to have at least two, maybe hopefully three scholarships for Daily City that we can give out. And those would each be a thousand-dollar scholarship. So I'm gonna be organizing that with ScholarShare and then submitting receipts to P L S for reimbursement. So it's, it's, it's more work, obviously. But it is, I think it's exciting because I was able to select the books. Whereas in the past, San Mateo County did it for us. So I would just tell them how many of each reading level that we needed. And then they would just submit the order. So this way, we have a little bit more control, which is nice. So that's just what's happening this year. So school outreach, this is, I'm starting tomorrow. This week, I'm going to be going to both high schools and Bay Shore School. They're getting, the high schools are getting out next week, and then Bay Shore is getting out early June, I think. But I'm just, I'm going to every single school in Jefferson Elementary, the High School District and Bay Shore to give out reading logs and let the kids select a book. So, but I won't be available for two weeks. I'm going to be gone. So we have some partnerships in the works with recreation. We will be doing the rec and reading again, which, if you're not familiar with that, recreation has themes. So this year, it's gonna be six weeks, different themes. And they kind of create this video. So either me or another library staff member will be doing like a short story time. And then with some songs. And they'll have crafts and baking and games, like it's just like this whole production. And they put it all together. And so it's gonna be posted on our social media and rec, social media. And then we're gonna be having take and make crafts for each week based on the theme that will be available at all the branches. So people can just pick up these crafts that will go along with the theme. And then it'll tell them about the weekly rec and reading video that they can watch. So that's pretty fun. Well, we've done that for the last couple of years, and it just keeps evolving. So I'm excited about that. The Big Lift Inspiring Summer Camps. There will be two camps in Daily City again this year, J F K and Thomas Edison. Those camps are for rising K through third grade. And it'll be, I think it's just about, it's either four or five weeks this year. And they're all-day camps. And I received a grant, or Daily City, I applied for it. Daily City Library received a grant, two thousand-dollar grant from the Pacific Library Partnership to provide pop-up programming for lunch at the library sites. And so those camps are providing lunch. So we can bring programming to them. I haven't, I haven't actually met with the people that are leading the camps this year. But in the past, they've been able to provide performers and library books. And we also will make library cards for any student that needs them. So it'll probably be something similar to that. But that'll be, that's exciting too, because that's just more outreach for us. And then we're gonna be going back to our Paws for Tails. So this is also exciting. If you're not familiar with this, it's when Humane Society, the Human Society gets teams of people with their service dogs. And they come to the library and kids can read to them. And it just helps them build confidence. And who doesn't love a cute dog? That's just lame. So we have a new team. We, we tried to do virtual when, when we weren't doing in-person programs. But it just didn't really take off for Daily City. So we're hoping going back to in-person will be exciting. The new team, the new person, she has a preference for Westlake because she actually grew up going to Westlake as a child. So now she has her dog, and they're gonna start at Westlake. And we're tentatively going to be planning that for June. So that'll be once a month at Westlake. And then as they, maybe that team, or if they can get another team, they will be expanding to our other locations. So it'll start at Westlake, though. And so this is, this is a huge thing. We're gonna be starting in-person programming as part of our summer learning. So, and every branch will be having a weekly program. So I just put this general schedule up here. So it's gonna be Tuesdays through Fridays. Every, yeah, every location will have one. Bay Shore will have one in the evening. So we will have one evening program a week. And this is just a sample of some of the things we're going to be making. But it'll be eight weeks. So what we'll be doing is eight programs, eight craft programs, and then we'll just rotate them. So every week will be a different thing at each location, but we're just gonna keep the same eight crafts. So, because it's going to be me and Amy, who's a part-time librarian, leading all of these programs. So we also are going to have some paid performers. These are not locked in yet. But these are who I've, some of them, ones I've reached out to. A magic Bubbles and Balloon Program. He's actually, he is locked in. So we're gonna do a program at John Daly where he teaches them about the science of bubbles. And then he also has an amazing program outside that we're gonna do at the end of summer. As kind of like a party where he has, I think it's twelve giant bubble stations. And he does, so kids can like do their own bubbles. And then he does bubbles on stilts, I think. We're gonna do that at ceremony at the end of the summer. That date isn't for sure yet. I reached out to the Uncle Jair's B, Traveling Bee Show, and I think we're gonna get them. I just haven't, it hasn't come together yet. But that's one of the shows I wanted. The Puppet Art Theater, we've had him for a couple of years. So he's really great, and he's gonna be coming. Can't remember which location. But I'm trying to do two performers at each location. And then this other one is Teacher Byrbe. She does music and puppets. It's for younger kids, but she's really great too. So, so, yeah, we're gonna try to do eight performers throughout the summer. It's just, I haven't, yeah, I haven't locked everything in yet, but I'm working on it. And this is my excitement. We're starting in-person storytime at the same time that we're starting our craft program. So the week of June thirteenth, we will be doing storytimes again in person at all locations. Ceremony will be the only one with two storytimes a week because I'll do family and baby storytime. And then every other location will have a family storytime. John Daly and Bay Shore will both have evening storytimes during the week. So, so excited for that. So these are just pictures of like my storytime kids, but obviously, like in winter. This was like before coded. But this is like the kind of stuff we would do after storytime something. So, so that's, that is my, oh. And the other, I forgot to add this in the presentation, but we are going to start recruiting volunteers, teen volunteers. And we haven't had any for two years, obviously. So we have to change it, change our form a little bit online. So I'm just letting staff know if any teens that are fourteen or older are interested in volunteering for the summer, they can just email me or call me at the library and I'll work with them. So we're hoping to get some interest in the summer. Any questions?
Well, that sounds very ambitious. Great success. Do any of the trustees have questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I feel like you always come correct with all your rich offerings, Sarah. So I appreciate that. I'm curious, are we offering any online or virtual programs for the summer? Or are we all back to all in-person stuff?
Um, we are going to go back to in-person. I know, I did have in-person storytime today. I have it until we start back in June. But, and I know, like, some, some of the kids have moved. And so it's like, oh, wait, this is easier, you know, for us to like have Zoom storytime. But I think we definitely get more people in person, though. And it's just, as a librarian, it's just not the same, like doing it like this. And I just, I miss that interaction with them so much. And so I think what we're trying to do is like have it at all locations. And we're doing two, two evening storytimes. And, you know, one, almost every day at one branch or another. So we're trying to, you know, get, get families in that way.
And I think that there could still be a place for the virtual programming, probably more for programs for adults, for author events and things like that. That can open up some possibilities that you wouldn't have in person. But with the kids, to keep them engaged in person is really special.
Yeah, well, I know, I, I was telling Taylor about, you know, just like in general, like virtual programs are so cool, like professional development, things that we couldn't normally go to in person, we can do it online. And, and we've had some families that have come to our programs, like from out of state and stuff like that. So it's, it is really cool. But just like the overall, like, comments that we've gotten from parents are just like, they don't want to do this anymore. They're tired. So, yeah, we're just gonna try to go back for, for children's programs, at least.
And you mentioned two scol, or how many scholarships are we trying to?
Well, we're, we're gonna see how many. We just, I have to organize the, what I've spent so far on the books. And so we're thinking we'll at least have two. But we're gonna try it for three this year. Yeah. So that'll be all for Daily City. So like every, every youth that finishes the reading program, their name will get entered into the scholarship raffle. So we'll draw three names. And so they, we try to tell them, like, you can do it as many times as you want. And every time you finish the reading, you get your name into that raffle. So you get more opportunities if you, the more you read.
And Sarah, with the extended hours for, for the libraries, like, are you feeling, are you feeling some flexibility around expanding our summer programming for this year? Yeah, I'm just curious, like, what, what's, how's that been kind of, have you been feeling it on the program side?
Um, I'm actually really excited because we have new librarians at John Daly and Bay Shore. And they're both like very, like, willing to do anything that they can. And so, yeah, if they weren't as excited, I probably wouldn't have been so ambitious to do this. But they're definitely like willing to help, and their staff is excited as well. So I, I mean, I think it's great, like, we're, we're excited.
Other questions? Comments? Excuse me. I was wondering, you said this is your, it sounded like first opportunity to actually select books. And I was wondering how you went about that.
Oh, um, so I, well, I ordered the children's books, or some of them. I ordered the picture books and all of the teen material for the library. And so I'm pretty familiar with, with being able to look. We use Scholastic for summer, and they actually have done a really good job of, of putting sets together, like diverse characters. They put books together based on, like, a lot of things that kids like, like humor or graphic novels or things that, when I take the books out, like, I know the kids are gonna jump on those. And so Scholastic does a really good job of putting those together. It was just, it was just very hard to like figure out how many sets for, you know, for like the younger kids or for the older kids. Plus, we had books already. So I guess a lot of it is just like, from what I've seen and from what I know that kids usually like. The only thing with Scholastic is they do give us a lot of free books based on how much we order. But a lot of those books are the books that nobody wants. And so it's kind of like give and take. But I mean, they're free, and somebody might want them. So we give them, we put them upstairs sometimes at ceremony. And maybe adults might be like, oh, I remember that book or something. But, yeah, it was so, it's so fun. It's just, I just had a very short amount of time to do it. So it was, it was very stressful, but, but fun, but fun. I'm excited.
Well, thanks. And I also was wondering about the, I'll call it the reading camp and the enrollment. Is there sort of a target enrollment or an upper limit for the number?
Um, are you talking, oh, I'm sorry, are you talking about the Big Lift camps? Or the rec and reading?
Rec and reading, sorry.
Okay, okay, so that, I'm not sure if Taylor can answer that about, they have their regular summer camps. This is different front, so this is just free, like this, we just post this on our website. I know recreation has camps that they do require payment for. But I'm not sure if they're doing that this year, Chayla.
Yes, yeah, oh, yes, they're gonna have, they're doing S Y R P. And they're gonna also have, you know, sports camps and all that. This is, this actually did, is something that was born out of the pandemic this, for rec and reading. And I'm glad that they're able to continue doing it along with all their, their regular stuff. They're, I think, in a similar position to us, that, you know, that we're emerging out of the pandemic. But there's still some uncertainty in terms of what the levels of participation will be. We shall see.
Yeah, so it's not really, it's not really like, you don't have to register. You can just watch it online. But really, it's just a way that I really appreciate being able to partner with recreation. Because we're in, we're actually in the same department, but we just don't get to work together that often. So this is, we've been doing this for the last two summers. And then we try to do it for like holidays or special occasions as well. Just to, like, they get to shine with their crafts and their cooking. And a couple, I think it was last, or two years ago, I brought my son, and he helped like make the, we, they made funnel cakes. So my son was like helping in the kitchen and made funnel cakes with them. And it's just, yeah, I just really appreciate being able to work with them. And that's why we do it.
Okay. I have one last question. I noticed that the programs at Bay Shore are in the evening. Is that because of operating requirements? Or, you know, the perception that that's the best time for community participation? Or, you know, what was your thinking?
Yeah, I mean, in the past, they did have an evening storytime when they were open, when they had their evening. And so when we were thinking about programs, well, we were thinking about storytime, in-person storytime. And so we were gonna do that on their night. They just typically don't get a lot of people. And so we just kind of wanted to try to, so what we're gonna do is have the storytime, just like a short storytime for summer, like maybe fifteen minutes, and then tack on our program after that. So that the people that are already there for storytime will have like this extra program afterwards. But it won't be too long. And we're gonna see how that goes. It's just, we just don't get good attendance there. I mean, we have it in the past. And so we're just trying to, like, glue, I don't know, get onto whatever we can to have people come. But I, I know that they do have a, the Boys and Girls Club, right, Chayla? And so I had, I've asked Christine, who's the manager there, if possibly we can do a performance like in the daytime for, that maybe they can come to as well. Because that's kind of a problem is trying to book somebody for the evening. Like, nobody wants to do evening programs. So we might have to change that up for Bay Shore for the paid performers.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if you get, you know, equal or better participation in the day, daytime versus evening time.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's, it's just so hard to know because we get both sides. I mean, parents want to do, want us to do evening programs, but they also want us to do daytime programs. And so it's just trying to figure out what works. So we're gonna try this.
Justine, did you have another thought?
No, I was just gonna say, I can also see the opportunity. I think from just like my experience, having worked at the Boys and Girls Club there, like, I can see the opportunity of program being in the evening because like the kids can come after Boys and Girls Club programming or like when they get picked up, they can like head to the library. But you have to share what, what, what kind of comes out of that. But I know, like, the library is sometimes like an exit way for the program, for the kids in that program. So maybe there's like something there, you know, you just pull them in as they're on the way out or something.
Yeah, well, Christine is going to speak with the manager at Boys and Girls Club to see what he thinks. Because I didn't know, like, what time are they there until, you know, like, I, I mean, I, we could totally adjust our, our program time if they would be able to come. But we just, we're not sure, so she was gonna check with them. So, yeah, I think, I mean, that would be an awesome opportunity if we could get them to like come to those programs.
And then are you all, I feel like you've done this in the previous summers. But are you all sharing the flyers for the programs with school sites as well?
Uh, the flyer or the reading?
Or like, yeah, any like, like, versus just like the list of programs and stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna be making, we'll be marketing all of that. We just have to get everything locked in before we will. But, but, yeah, it's almost ready. It'll be ready by June.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Chayla, did you have anything else to report under the director's report item?
No, I have a couple of things just under announcements later, but.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the trustees' report section. Beginning with the B project. I can report that Teresa and I do not have compatible schedules. And so we have not met as a two-person committee since our last meeting, when the committee was established. And so in the absence of that, I have gone ahead and spoken to the Daily City Public Library Associates. And they have graciously agreed to put the, I'll call it the B project on their agenda at their. On their agenda at their uh meeting this Thursday. Uh, and uh. Aviole and Urban Beekeeping will be making a presentation, I imagine, similar to the one they made to us, uh, to DCPLA. And uh, we'll see if we can develop a more formal partnership and, and move forward uh with the project and. Uh, you know, take one step at a time and uh. Think about sites and issues and uh, you know, facilities managers and. All of the things that have to be considered, uh, if we have any chance of implementing this in the future. Are there any questions about the B project at this point? All right. Uh, we'll move to the next item, uh, the board vacancy. Uh, Stephen, you've come on at just the, the right time. Uh, we talked about this last time and. I guess I was hoping you might be able to offer some insight into uh what's going on with the council and making appointments to the Library Board of Trustees.
I, I actually don't believe this is on our agenda for this week. I, I think, is that on the old agenda, uh, Chela?
How did I get the wrong agenda?
I can, I can share it on my screen. Would that help?
Yeah, I think so. Mine does say April. Oh, no wonder it's on the wrong agenda. Okay, sorry about that. Yes, please.
Does that work?
Subcommittee report, okay, that, that we did. Uh, we'll forget uh the board vacancy for the time being. And move on to uh the DCPLA report. Uh, Tricia, is that why you're here?
That's why I'm here. Thank you so much. Good evening, Vice President Lex and the entire Board of Trustees. Um, I'm so happy to finally be able to meet all of you, um, although it's Zoom. It, I'm still happy to be here. I've missed a couple of the meetings that I've scheduled to be on. So um, thank you for having me. Um, and for Lauren and Justin, I don't think I've actually physically met you. Um, however, I've, I, I've worked with um Bill and Shayla and Sarah, I know from the libraries. Um, but I am the current president for the Daily City Public Library Associates for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So uh this evening, I'd like to share a few things um from our DCPLA um events that we've had. Um, and first off, we, on April twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, DCPLA hosted our second commencement event for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Daily City Youth Poet Laureate. Uh, this was held in person, finally, at the Daily City City Hall, and it was a very exciting event. For all that attended, including our mayor, Roger Dust McCall, who actually recited his own poem at the, to the audience. So that was, um, that was a nice treat. We all enjoyed that. Um, and the first runner-up named um for the Youth Poet Laureate was Hannah Do Campo Fan. And the Youth Poet Laureate for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is Chloe Chow. Um, so we cannot wait for her to be exposed to the Daily City community and to, for her to be reciting her poetry. Now, if you are unfamiliar with the Youth Poet Laureate Program, it's a partnership with the National Youth Poet Laureate Program. Urban Word and uh Daily City Public Library. And the program celebrates teen poets who live. Or attend school in Daily City and exhibit a commitment to artistic excellence, civic engagement, leadership, and social justice. The Youth Poet Laureate receives a five thousand dollar award, VIP status to represent Daily City at community events. And a publication of five of their poems in the National Youth Poet, Poet Laureate Annual Anthology by Penmanship Books. So that's great exposure for them. Also, uh, Victoria Magbelong, which uh is the executive director of DCPLA, which I'm sure you all know, has been appointed um director of the Daily City Youth Poet Laureate Program. In addition to all that she's already doing. So we just want to congratulate her on that. Secondly, um, it is DCPLA's May membership, and if you have not yet received your membership packet in the mail, you should be receiving it soon. We ask Daily City community as well as our own library, uh, Board of Trustees to please support our program and mail in your dues. Um, if you're not currently a member, please go to our website, uh, dcpl.org. And go to the donate link, which is on the top right-hand corner of our website, which you, um, it'll, it'll take you to the membership link where you can actually sign up. So remember that all of our signup benefits, um, it goes right back to the Daily City Libraries. Uh, and I think Justine, um, they call you out on this one. Thank you in advance for signing up for the automatic membership. This is actually a great way to help um support DCPLA and not have to worry about. Keeping track and let, and reminding yourself if you've signed up, if you've renewed your membership. So thank you for doing that. That's great. Um, lastly, um, each year, DCPLA hosts a fall event to fundraise for our organization to give back to the Daily City Libraries. This year, we will be hosting an art and lit fest on Saturday, November five, twenty twenty-two, at the Ceramonti Center. We're still in the planning stages, um, so more details will be available um as we continue our planning. But please save the date. We would love to somehow collaborate with the Daily City Library Board of Trustees or just have you in attendance. Um, that would be awesome. So our next DCPLA Board of Directors meeting will be held this Thursday, May nineteenth, um, via Zoom. So we'll be meeting there to continue on with our planning. And that is all I have to share for this evening. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you, Tricia, for the um, the shout out. I'd actually committed to Victoria. I think that one of the, the last meeting I was at, that I would increase it. So I'm holding myself to that commitment.
Okay, no worries.
Can you all, can you actually repeat that, save the date? I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it. But can you repeat that, save the date? I missed it.
Yes, it's Saturday, November five.
Okay.
And um, right now, we're guesting the time to be eleven to three, but don't hold me to that. Um, because like I said, we're still planning. Um, Marie Villarosa has been awesome in allowing us to host this at the Ceremony Center. And we are so, so excited. So I know you and Lauren and the rest of the Board of Trustees, I know you guys can reach out to, to uh students. Or just our community, if you know of people who have some talent out there, whether it's through the arts or music. Send them our way. We could love to have them um get a booth set up for them, um, because we really want to make this particular event um. Noticed and um available for our own community members who have a talent that just don't get exposed. And we're really trying to get the arts, um, you know, really emphasize arts in the Daily City community. And we have so much hidden talent. In our community. It's just they don't have the platform to expose themselves. And I'm, this is what we're trying to do. We're trying to get this particular event to be able to expose them.
Uh, Tricia, with that in mind, I was wondering if it would be possible for Chloe to attend one of the Board of Trustees meetings, uh, to introduce herself. Talk a little bit about her background and maybe recite one or two of her poems.
Sure, I will put that down. And then I'll, I'll coordinate either with uh you or uh President Papal. Um, Papua, uh, would you like me to contact you about that as far as um setting up that time, the?
Well, maybe working through Chela and then she can be the, you know, for information to Teresa and to me and the other board members.
Okay, all right, no worries. I'll reach out to Chela.
All right, with you, Chela?
Absolutely. Thank you for that. I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, any questions or comments about uh Tricia's report? Or DCPLA activities?
I don't have any, oh, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say that I appreciate you, Tricia, for um coming in and introducing yourself and also sharing, you know. What DCPLA has been up to. And I'm also looking forward to the Art and Lit Fest. Um, probably cannot be there, but I'll definitely um, definitely spread the word. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I appreciate the information. Um, and maybe this will come up again when you like send us a reminder later, but I am curious if you all are taking any. You know, if you're also looking to bring in businesses, like arts and culture businesses for the event, um, or if you're looking for like business sponsorships.
Yes, most definitely we are. So yeah, send them our way. Um, you, I can send out my email to you guys in case you don't have it, or you can send it directly to the DCPLA, um. Uh, info at dcpl.org um email. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, Tricia, thank you for uh again pointing out Justine's uh. Uh, acting as a role model for the rest of the group, signing up on a recurring basis. Uh, that's really a great thing, Justine. Thank you.
Yes, it is. Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to announcements and communications. Are the, are there announcements or communications? We'll start with Chela.
Um, I have just a couple of things coming up um next week, so I'll, I'll just share them on my screen. The first thing. Is going to be um an AAPI, um, Asian American and Pacific Islander Celebration and Open Mic Night. Um, Eileen Casaneto, our grown-up poet laureate, is going to be. Um, emceeing and she's bringing in a lot of really cool poets from, from actually all over the Bay Area. Um, so that's gonna be at Ceremony Library next, um, next Tuesday evening. And there will be, so something to. Something to look forward to. I hope you can make it. I'll send out um a copy of this uh after the meeting via email as well. And then um, on Thursday, these are both actually in-person um programs. We have an evening with poets again. Um, this one's gonna be at the John Daly Library, and we have um three poets. Will be doing reading and a Q and A. Uh, again, our, our uh wonderful San Mateo County Poet Laureate, Eileen, will be um hosting that as well. And then um I, I was asked for a follow-up on the um, the park passes at the last meeting. And we had been expecting that we would receive the rest of our park passes, but apparently there's been issues with the. Supply chain, as you have heard about, and they were delayed. So we have not received them. The one path we have at each bench is of course in high demand. Uh, but we don't have the rest of our passes, but we are expecting to have them before the end of the month. And I think that was all of, that I had to share.
Okay, are there any uh announcements or comments from the other trustees? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to agenda building for the next meeting. Uh. Does anyone have a suggestion for next, uh, the next meeting's agenda? Well, I would like to uh continue to have the B project as an agenda. And then let's resurrect uh the board vacancy, just to bring us up to date on that situation.
Hmm, yeah, I would also, I also wanted to recommend Bill. Um, I know that in the past, we've, we've done some just like intentional, we've done some intentional attention to. Doing some library visits. Um, so I don't know if you want to do a little bit of that next time too, especially with the extended hours. Um. Maybe you can assign each other a library to go, to go do a visit.
Okay, so let's put library visits or community visitation uh under the trustees' report for discussion. Any other items for the agenda? Okay, hearing none, uh, we will open the meeting to any public comments. If there are any members of the public who are tuned in. And would like to comment, uh, I assume, Chela, you would admit them now, or do we have anyone uh attending other than?
We do not have anyone attending.
Okay. All right. Well, in that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
My motion?
Okay, Justine moves that we adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, Lauren, seconds. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for attending. Uh, Justine, Lauren, thank you for being here. We couldn't have done it without you, literally.
Very true, Quorum. We're here.
Thank you for joining us. Uh, you know, even if you have to tune in a little bit late and uh, I apologize for the confusion. On my part of the agenda. Uh, Shayla and I talked before the meeting, and I think we're gonna. Work that out so that I always have an accurate copy of the agenda for the meetings in the future. So, thank you, and again, my apologies.
Don't worry.
No worries.
You're welcome. Good evening all.
Hi, everyone.